Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Wyhame School Committee. It's February 28th. The meeting is being recorded and streamed live and will be rebroadcast by WCTV. And it's also an audio recording is made, being made by Mrs. Ruiz. I would like to welcome Mr. Patrick Trappiano from the Board of Selectmen, Derek Sullivan, our Town Administrator, and Bernie Pidgen, the FinCom Chair. Thank you for coming and being here with us tonight also. And all the parents who are here, all the people who are here, and Claire. And Pat Rumney. Pat Rumney from the Finance Commission. And Claire.
Yes ma'am.
Whom I've known like my whole life. Town Moderator. We are not going to have public comment at the beginning. The public comment is actually after item number six or during it with the budget reduction talks because we moved it there so that you would get all the information from us first and it would be more relative to have it there. So it wasn't supposed to be typed in two places. And when we have the public comment, I would like you to limit your comment to two to four minutes when you're speaking. The first order of business is good news. Does anyone have any good news? Please.
I do.
That's funny.
The weather?
Judy, I have good news.
Joyce.
A couple of weeks ago, I was lucky enough to attend the Best Buddies Holiday Party at Salerno's, which I've been to a lot of those parties. It was definitely the best one yet. So I just want to say thank you to Best Buddies and thank you to the Salerno family for sponsoring that again. It's really a great event.
And I also consider it good news, no matter what you have to say that you're here. So congratulate yourself for taking an active role in your town.
Do I have anyone to approve the minutes of the meeting of February 7th so we can move along?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Five zero zero. Next, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Swett because he arranged to have this presentation and we thank him very much ahead of time for doing this, Forrest.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the Chair and the Superintendent for allowing me to put what I consider to be a critical presentation and I am thrilled that so many people are here to see it. I also want to thank Keith Hovan, the CEO of the South Coast Hospital Group for being so responsive to my request and to Bill Burns, who's the Director of Government Affairs at the South Coast Hospital Group. We are, as far as I'm concerned, privileged to have Joe Scott here to talk about two incredibly important subjects. Well, really, just one. We all think of concussions, especially those of us who are privileged to be coaches, as a very serious issue. But when I saw recently that chronic non-concussive hits can be a very serious issue for the health of our children, I thought, this is something we need to hear more about. And then literally within a week or two, I saw there was now a blood test associated with evaluating whether a student had received a concussion. Why do I consider Joe Scott to be an important presenter to us? First of all, he's got 31, I repeat, 31 years. I know, Joe, that makes you all just like me, but you know, we'll live with that. 31 years as a certified athletic therapist. And on top of that, he has, and I'm going to read this because it's rather impressive. He has been an active member of the Department of Public Health Sports Concussion Expert Clinical Advisory Committee since its inception in 2009. Initially only licensed as athletic trainer, as the athletic trainer representing the athletic trainers of Massachusetts, helping to establish guidelines and requirements for the concussion legislation passed in 2010. Currently, he serves on this committee with Kathy Thornton, who unfortunately couldn't be here as well, to better shape and amend the regulations for the purpose of promoting safety and well-being of student athletes throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I think Joe has a big job and he's got a lot to say and I urge you to give him your full attention. Joe, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Can you hear me if I don't use the microphone?
But the people at home won't hear you.
Oh. The people at home. Could the people at home hear me now? Perfect. So thank you for having me. I'm not far into Wyhame High School. Back about six or seven years ago, I actually covered here for two years as the practicing athletic trainer when you guys were in between having a permanent athletic trainer. And Kathy Thornton, my counterpart, who sits on the clinical advisory board with me, also covered here in the past couple of years. So we're both very familiar what goes on here in the area of athletics and academics. I also live in the area, so I'm very familiar with what happens. Jeff asked me to speak to you today regarding some of the more current issues that have come up regarding concussion, concussion management, and more importantly, two recent studies that have come out. I think one of the most important things to understand in concussion management is it really starts with all of us. It's not up to the coaches or the principal or the teachers at the school or the student athletes themselves or the athletic trainer. It really starts with everybody. Parents need to be involved. Physicians need to be involved. We all need to take an active role in helping to understand and recognize what a concussion is and being able to manage it, not only to get a student athlete back into play, but also to get a student back into the classroom. So there are certain parameters that are in place as far as return to play guidelines. There is also a lot of information out there, what they're calling now return to learn, as far as how to adequately prepare a student who has suffered a concussion to be able to get back into the classroom so that they are able to perform at a level academically as they were prior to getting a concussion. On a personal note, I have a 14-year-old daughter who has suffered two concussions before her freshman year in high school and then had a third this year playing volleyball. So not only do I know it, I live it and know how frustrating it can be as a parent and I also understand the medical side of it. So the two real areas that Jeff wanted me to speak about are related to a recent study that came out from the people at BU and actually it was a group of people from really across the nation that were involved in this study. And what it was, it was a study stating that they were able to validate that people could develop chronic traumatic encephalopathy, which is a brain disease that you normally see in injured people that have occurred over many, many years. Aaron Hernandez had it. A lot of football players have had it. There's been a lot of studies and a lot of discussion around it. What was important about this study is they actually used eight young teenage victims because they all had passed away in order for them to do the studies on the brain and try to identify some of the protein molecules that develop. And CTE is primarily caused by a protein called a tau protein. And it's something, it's like, it's like a scar tissue that you get in your skin or whatever, but it's a scar tissue that kind of forms on the brain. And it's really only identifiable after death, once you do an MRI or a CAT scan on the brain to be able to identify it. And it's actually relatively new. It was first identified back in the early 90s. The movie Concussion that came out talked about the doctor that was the first one to identify it and started to relate it to, oh, this is related to concussions or this is related to traumatic hits to the head. And there's been a lot of studies going on since then, but this study was the first study that actually found the evidence of this protein in young student athletes. Now, the population that they studied all had a history of concussion at one time or another, but out of the eight student athletes, they were all males. They all played in any type of a contact sport ranging from football to hockey to basketball. Four of them had no recent signs or symptoms related to concussion. The other four had active concussion. Actually, one of them died from second impact syndrome, which is getting a second head injury on top of a concussion that they had suffered very recently. So the alarming thing was they found this protein specifically in one of the four individuals, but they found changes physiologically to the brain, which were precursors to the tau protein and to CTE. So it brought up a question that they raised was, does it take concussion to actually get this type of a disease? The study also examined many, many mice and put them through a series of tests where they banged them on the head repetitively many, many times and then tested them through a series of different tests to see whether or not they had been concussed or not and then studied their brains afterwards to see if the protein was evident based on the repetitive concussions that they had. And the study found that many of the mice who were banged on the head repeatedly but never had any signs or symptoms of a concussion, had that protein develop in their brain. So once they had passed, once they cut the brain open and they looked at it, the tau protein was present and there were suspicions that the early signs of this very traumatic disease could be associated to repetitive injury that did not lead to concussion. This is a very small study. It's really the first of its kind. I think there was some alarm brought up because of the fact that like, oh my God, here we have young student athletes that have CTE. And that's not really what this showed. It just showed that the chemical changes in the brain that occur can occur both with concussive levels of injury and also with repetitive injury to, or head trauma to the brain. So I actually spoke to Robert Cantu up at Emerson Hospital, who is one of the co-authors of the study. He sits on the clinical advisory board with me. And I said, tell me simply in words that I can relay to the people of Wyhame, what do you want them to take away with this? What do they need to know? What should they be alarmed about? What can put them at ease? And he said, there's really three things that they need to be aware of. That this is new information that we're just learning about and there's nothing conclusive about it, other than in the study with the mice and with some of the brains of these individuals that were young student athletes who had many other physical problems and mental health problems. So it's unsure as to whether some of the behaviors that they may have participated in may have been a precursor to some of what they found in their brains or whether it was related strictly to concussive events or repetitive head trauma. So it's an early study. The second thing was that not everybody is going to get CTE. And he likened it to, not everybody who smokes cigarettes gets cancer. You know, they'd like you to believe that and we know that it's not good for us and we know that there are health issues related to it, but people sometime are genetically disposed to, their bodies just don't develop those types of cancers. And they seem to think that people also have the same genetic principles that may prevent their brain from developing this certain type of protein and preventing them from getting this type of an injury. And the third thing he wanted me to know or wanted me to share with you, because I asked him, you know, well, how do you feel? What do you feel about contact sports? What do you feel about young kids? And his takeaway is, he feels that the actual skills related to any contact sport, whether it's football, hockey, basketball, lacrosse are very, very important and that kids at a young age should be able to participate and be able to have the ability to develop those skills. He feels that the contact portion of those sports should really be held off until the body is more physically mature. He said 14-years-old, meaning a freshman year in high school, but he's not in favor of youth football or youth sports where there is repetitive head trauma or there is a chance for concussions. On the other hand, he said, we all know that kids growing up ride bikes and ride skateboards and ride horses and fall off and bang their heads and fight with their brothers and sisters and those things happen. And there's nothing to say that those things don't just as well lead to those problems. But he does feel if we want to be in a position where we can potentially prevent or limit the exposure to these types of head trauma and head injuries, that limiting the amount of contact until a person's skeleton mature, until they have the physical ability to really absorb impact, until their brains are developed to a better degree, is really an important step to take. Because one of the things that happens is the earlier you are when you get a concussion, it's not like when we are older and we injure ourselves, we don't heal quite as quickly and we, you know, the ankle sprain we got when we were 15 or 16-years-old, that might have been better in a week, might hobble us up for six weeks. The brain works completely opposite. It's when your brain is young and developing and it's really using a lot of the energy from your body, when it becomes injured from any type of a head trauma or a concussion, it takes a lot to help to heal that brain and get it back to a normal state and it takes a long time for that to happen. And as we get older, that time lessens and lessens and our brain has been able to develop more and more. So it's just important to really try and minimize those types of trauma in young children, especially when they're very, very young and they don't have the physical ability to really control their own body or to be able to absorb the impact and the problems that happen. So the last thing I want to touch base on, and then I'll open it up for a few questions, is there was a recent study that came out last week, I think it was posted in the New York Times, but it's actually come out in a few places. FDA approves new blood tests to diagnose concussions. Well, folks, not really. That was really kind of the media sensationalization or the fake news. The blood test that was developed is actually a test that does detect two proteins that are released when the brain has an injury severe enough to cause bleeding. Most concussions don't cause any brain bleeding whatsoever. Okay? They're caused by sheer forces. They're caused by the jarring of the brain in the skull and some disruption of the synapses and things that are going on, but there's not really a lot of bleeding associated with it. Very severe head injuries, TBIs or traumatic brain injuries, which probably are concussion injuries as well, will bleed and will cause that protein to be released. The main purpose of this blood test that they're developing is to be able to use within three to four hours after an injury to detect if there's bleeding in the brain to prevent having to do a CAT scan, to prevent having to have additional radiation given to somebody, especially young children, but really anybody. If we can avoid that radiation you get from a CAT scan, that's a good thing. So the blood test actually detects that there's bleeding going on the brain and helps them to be able to make a determining factor on how they're going to treat that particular injury. So even though it came out as a reported FDA-approved concussion blood test, it really doesn't have anything to do with concussions. It really has more to do with checking for traumatic brain injury and bleeding in the brain. And fortunately enough, with most concussions we see in sports-related injuries, that just doesn't happen. On occasion, it can. Very, very severe accidents, motocross sports, snowboarding, skiing, some of those types of sports, you can get those types of very, very severe head injuries. But for the most part, for the types of sports we're talking about in high school, that's not something that occurs. And this isn't a test that you could administer right there on the sidelines and say, oh yeah, you got a concussion, you're all done. Or nope, you're fine, you can go back in the game. The philosophy, the policies, the procedures are the same. If we suspect a concussion based on any reasons whatsoever, we remove the athlete from the day, for the day, from that sport and we do follow-up based on, you know, what they report that afternoon, that evening, the next day and seek medical clearance and advice as we need to. So those are the two big areas I really wanted to discuss. Do I have time for questions?
Just three.
Three questions, if anybody has any particularly? No questions at all? Well, then I think I did my job and explained what I need to. Thank you all for your time. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Joe. I really appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, back to you.
Next, we're going to hear about our review of student discipline and it's going to
Good evening, School Committee. Ooh, I want to make sure you're up here. Ta-da. Good evening, School Committee. Good evening, everyone, Wyhame community. My name is Bethany Chandler. I'm the Principal of Deacon School and I appreciate you listening to hear this presentation about our discipline. I'm very proud of this presentation. I'm very proud of the staff, the families we have that have put all of the interventions into place for our students to be successful. Okay. Here is just a number and I want you to think of it as just a number, but behind that number are learning opportunities for students because you can see here, yeah, total disappointment incidence is 214 last year. This year, 186. That's a lot, right? We're only in February 28th today. But behind the 186 incidents are 186 learning opportunities that has been a case-by-case scenario that we need to look at. And each of these 186 incidents have been moments and teachable experiences that we want to talk about and opportunities. And these are our students, right? So behind this number are real opportunities for kiddos. Here you have discipline at Deacon's 2017, 2018. This is a breakdown. It's really awesome. We have a new program called SWISS and I want to thank our disciplinary subcommittee and Ms. Coppins for really implementing the SWISS program new this year to us. It's a data collection system that we use that monitors the discipline in the school. One of the most profound items it has is where does discipline happen most often? Is it at the recess? Because if I know it's a recess and I see it and the data's there, we can make changes to what's going on at recess. If it's in the lunchroom, that's something that we need to address. So here, when you look at this, this is from our SWISS data, we have our enrollment days in school. It's important to look at that, right? Because when you look at number of incidents, well, you have to understand how many days have we been in school? You know, what does our enrollment look like? Referrals. So you can see what months here are most popular. You can see that October, we were very busy. Thirty percent of all of the discipline referrals were in October, right? And we're going down. And then location of referrals, most commonly this year at Deacon's School, the discipline referrals come from the classroom. That tells me as principal that we are looking at what's happening in the classroom. We're looking at placement. We're looking at what's happening with the student. Are they overstimulated by the amount of students? Or do they need some academic interventions? What's happening in the classroom? So that's where we're looking at discipline. And then I have a breakdown of discipline referrals by grade level. K, one and two. K is the highest level. It's not surprising. It's my, it's the biggest population in our whole district. We have, you know, a large population of 223 students in K. I'm not surprised. This is some of their first year in school. They're learning. They're learning how to behave, many of our students. So again, we're not surprised by this. And it's great to see that grade two is our lowest discipline because as they get older, they're learning. And this is how we respond to incidents. I want you to think about too, that it's not always just consequential. There's a lot of prevention that we do at Deacon's School and at all schools. We really should be. That's what we're trained to do, is to prevent incidences from ever happening. So in prevention, we post teachers, all of our teachers post our expectations of what's happening in their classroom. This is what's expected, right? So the students know. Often, many times, our classrooms, the teachers ask the students, what do you think should happen? Right? And they create what is expected in the classroom. We have lunch bunches, social groups. We have power class, so that's a great special that we have run by Mr. Paley, who teaches etiquette. He teaches expectations in the hallway. He teaches even bathroom routines and you think, oh wow, why are they in the restroom? Well, it's important. We have the early children, right? Five, six, seven-years-old. So it's really important. So that's a great class we have at Deacon's School. We do a lot of incentivizing. We do daily charts, mentoring, prescribed breaks. We have a great mentor program that comes naturally. All of our teachers are mentors and our office staff are mentors. We all have relationships with our students. Relationships is key to making progress when it comes to school climate, culture, and safety. You have to know who your kids are. We also have interventions. Peer mediation, special space, separate space, reflection, restitution. A lot of times, if a student makes a mistake, we fix it. That's what we say every morning in our daily pledge. When I make a mistake, I fix it. All of my students know. And we say it all the time. I say, hey, you made a mistake. He's like, yep, I'm going to fix it. Right? So that's so important that students know that we all make mistakes, right? We're humans. And you become a great person when you fix your mistakes. So we work on that. And then there are times where consequences do work, you know? It worked for me and I'm sure it works for many of us, is that I'm going to call mom, dad, no, no, don't. But it works, right? And if it works for a kid, it depends on each kid, that consequences do work to change the behavior because that's our goal, is to change the behavior to make it work. And then of course, it's got to be a relationship between the teacher, the parents, administration sometimes, support services. It's always there. Right now, I'm going to show you the next, the last of the slides. As principals, it's important for me to see how we're doing as a school. We did a mid-year survey. One question is about safety because when you talk about discipline, I think what's most important is we think about safety. So here you can see, this is a staff survey question. Safety is a top priority at John W. Deacon's School. Fifty-four staff members responded to this at Deacon's School. The red is agree. So we're at 52% and 49% strongly agree. We had no disagree or strongly disagree. This is the parent survey. We had, we sent out for every, each of the staff members, thank you, teachers, sent out to every fourth student in their class, a home survey. We received 57 surveys back. According to the parents at Deacon's School and our families, 60% agree that safety, that they feel their child is safe at school and 40% feel strongly. There were no disagree or strongly disagree. And finally, we surveyed the children. This was fun. So I want to thank the Assistant Principals and the Dean of Students for going to the students and they took an online survey, four questions, just a smiley face, a yes or a frown, no. So as you can see from our results, 97.8% of our students feel safe in school. The red is no. Those were three students. So we talked a little bit more with them about why they don't feel safe at school. So anyway, it was good and it, as a staff and as, we're very proud of what we saw in this survey and these results. And I'm very proud as principal for the support staff we have, for the teachers we have. We have an incredible school. Our families are incredible. So I want to thank you. Questions for the School Committee?
Do we have any questions? Mary?
I do have one question. I know that you said the kindergarten class group had the highest amount of incidents, which, yes, I agree with you that it is them adapting to school sometimes. But my other question is, do you, and I don't know if you've even looked at this, but I know that the cutoff age has changed, so you have younger children coming in. Do you have any data on that, whether or not it is the younger children or happens?
When it comes to relative to their age? No, see, no, we don't. But that's, I mean, it's an interesting idea, Ms. Morgan, so, I mean, it's something we could possibly put into SWISS of their age, you know, and it counts even by months when they're so young like that.
Right.
But no, we don't have the data on that quite yet. I could, of course, go back. It would take some time to look at my most common referrals, to see those students and to see what age they are in. Because yes, we do have students that are four that do come in and, you know, developmentally, so it's interesting to think about.
I'd like to, if you can do that, see that data.
Yeah, absolutely. I would, I can absolutely do that. What we can do is just look at the students who have the discipline referrals and to see what age they're at. I'd be happy to get that information for you, Ms. Morgan. Thank you.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, just for clarification, when you talk about behavior incidents or discipline incidents.
Yep.
It's, are we lumping in everything, including suspensions and?
I did that, but I have those numbers too.
Okay.
So when it, when we look at my most common types of incidents are disorderly conduct and physical contact. And I'm, and- And I'm, and again, physical contact, you think of, we have little children, and when you think of five, six, and seven-year-olds, they don't communicate like middle schoolers and high schoolers. If you, a middle schooler will tell you who, what, when, where, why it happened. A five-year-old does not. So very oftentimes, they use their hands. If they're frustrated, very often, they become physical. It's just something developmentally that happens. But I do have that. And by some instances, I have 47 at this time. So I do have that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any children that you would describe as incorrigible?
Oh, I love, I, listen, we have the, we have the greatest students that, you know, every child, every child has the ability to learn and work and.
So no child has the capacity to be so disruptive that it's unfair to the rest of the children?
I think that we have a system at Deacon's School where we are able to work with every child in a way to meet their needs. And if we aren't able to, we will come up with an advisory committee where they can come up with ideas for us.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Joan Siemens. I'm the principal of the Minot Forest School, and with me is Robin Murphy, the assistant principal of the Minot Forest School as well.
Good evening.
So when we look at the incidents at Minot, we did a comparison year to year, from the beginning of the school to this date in February. So we have last year's data and up to present year data. So, go ahead.
As you can see, we're happy to report that this year, we've gone down in almost in every category except for threats. And I'll let you know that the threats were verbal, and it was a child saying, I'm going to hurt you. So that's what the threats are at third and fourth grade. So we're pleased about that. We're really happy with our physical attack and assaults and the.
Happy the number has decreased.
Happy that, oh, yeah, that the number's decreased, sorry. That the number has decreased.
All right. Though, we didn't put the total numbers, but last year was 166. This year, it's 108 total incidents.
And as I'm going to say, wow, how did those numbers go down? So there's a variety of things that we have done to get there. So we also looked at teacher surveys. We looked at parent surveys from last year.
Could I just stop, just for one second?
Yes.
The slide before, we had some confusion about.
Okay.
So we'd like to just ask a question when you're on that, so we can proceed.
Oops. That one?
So the number 36 represents the entire year, correct?
No.
Okay.
It represented last September.
Through?
First day of school to February 28th.
Thank you. So it is exactly the same time period?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So we will, also looked at teacher surveys. We looked at parent surveys from last year about discipline. And we knew we had to put some items into place in order to make some improvements this year. During the summer, we were able to purchase the book, The First Six Weeks of School, and all teachers took the book home this summer and read it. And one of the items that came out of that, which is part of responsive classroom, is morning meeting. So we have implemented morning meeting every morning in our grades three and four classrooms. We also looked at updated behavior protocol and slips. So we really worked at streamlining the, the discipline form that the teachers fill out. They give warnings to their students, they contact parents, and then it may come to the administration at that point. We looked at, how do we handle disruptions in the classroom? And we wanted to make sure that we maximize that and limited the number of disruptions and making sure the teachers could maximize their time. So we developed the transitional support room. So we have a place so that if a student is having difficulty, or maybe he or she has to finish some work and needs a quieter space to do that, they go to the transitional room where we have a paraprofessional. We have found that to be the biggest success for us this year. We have, like I said, there's certain steps the students have to go through in order to go back to the classroom. They have to demonstrate that they're ready to go back. The staff feel that this has been a great success as far as being able to maximize their, their teaching and really teaching without disruption. And as you can see in the previous slides, we have seen a decrease in those numbers. Staff think that it's been beneficial to the students. One staff member had said, my students don't want to go to the transitional room, so they know the expectations now and my expectations of behavior in the classroom. We are very grateful to have a full-time social worker that can work not only with students, but with families and referrals to various agencies. This year is the first year we have a behavior interventionist who has been absolutely wonderful and has a great relationship with our students, and she's on hand to, to work with students. We do a lot with PBIS. We have check-in and check-out, which is part of that. So we have students that go to certain members of our staff. They have to earn a goal. They earn points throughout their day. So in the morning, they figure out what their goal is, and then at the end of the day, they check back out with that person to see, did they meet their goal? And we're seeing a lot of success with that as well. As part of PBIS, we give out leaves. Teachers give out leaves, administrators give out leaves. The month of March, we'll be doing shamrocks, where, where complementing the students by following the rules. And when they meet 100 leaves or shamrocks per week, then they're entered into a raffle and they may win an extra recess. But we also wanted to go the extra step and reward those students who are always doing the right things, because we heard that from families as well. So we have what we call the admin patrol. And we started this towards the end of last year. We are, right now, Mrs. Murphy and I don our capes, because we have a superhero theme this year. And we pick a few students who are always doing the right thing, and we go to their house, or we go to their daycare, or we go to martial arts. And we have a certificate for them, and we have a balloon, and we surprise them, and we thank them for being a great student and always doing the right thing. And this has really had a positive impact as well. We also give them a button to wear. It says Principal's Award, and we ask them to wear that every Friday, because we want them to be proud of what they do every day. So we make sure we have support people during our meetings, if teachers have any questions about students. Many of the teachers are using an app called Class Dojo. So students might think the teachers are on their phone, but they're actually putting in the points for the students. So many of the families that may be here this evening can get immediate feedback on how the children are doing in the classroom. So that has been a great help for teachers as well. And right before the holidays, we had a raffle, and for students that, again, did the right thing, they earned raffle tickets, and we had a, two bicycles that we were able to raffle off, and so we had two winners. So we're trying to do many positive things at Minot Forest. We'll be soon announcing the February Scotty Montero Award winner. So we feel that this year has been our best year.
And we don't have it on the slide, but every month, we had certain number of incidences in September, October, November, October, end of, end of October, beginning of November, we had a peak. Every month since then, decreased, 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 decreased. So our numbers of incidents have gone down as of November, every month. So we're seeing that that transitional support room and the expectations that the children are understanding, and they're realizing that, no, I do want to be in the classroom. I want to be part of this group. I want to be part of the culture. I want to learn. And that's what we're seeing, when these children who were having a little difficulty at the beginning of the year, especially with their disruptions, and they were antsy and they couldn't, they were having trouble. And then when they spend time in the transitional support room, realize, no, this is not where I want to be. I want to be learning. And the numbers are amazing that we're seeing. It's really great to see.
Questions? I'll start with Mary.
So a question I have is, which I should have also asked Ms. Chandler, but I assume you are doing the data the same way. Are you also looking at if there are particular children that are having more incidents than others?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we have the, the Student Support Council. I'll flag certain students that I notice in every other week that are like, ooh, there's a couple that are popping up. I'll flag them for the Student Support Council to meet and talk about and say, what, what can we do? What do we have to do? And get them on the check-in, check-outs, whatever we have to do.
It's always what additional supports can we put in place for those students?
Thank you.
I don't actually have a question. I just wanted to say that I'm happy to hear you talk about reducing the disruptions in the classroom, because that's really important. That's definitely a concern. So thank you.
So to, to piggyback off of my colleague's question, you, do you have students that you would consider chronically disruptive?
We have students that have challenges with behavior on a day-to-day basis. And when we have any student that has a challenge, we have a great support team that is there to help them.
That's a very diplomatic answer.
I'm not going to discuss individuals. Obviously, I wouldn't.
Did I ask you to discuss? I did not.
No, but I feel that that impacts a student as well.
So I'll repeat the question, and I don't want to know the name of any student.
I wouldn't give that anyone.
I know you wouldn't. So I repeat, I don't want, I have no interest in that. Do you have any chronically disruptive students?
We have students that have behavioral challenges, yes, and sometimes on a daily basis.
Okay. What would it take for you to say, this is the wrong school for that, for this student?
That would be a team meeting decision if it's a student in special education.
It doesn't have to be a special education student, correct? You can be chronically disruptive and not have special needs.
That would be true. So we would have to put other supports in place for that student. We'd have to look at other agency supports, perhaps?
We would never say that a student is chronically disruptive.
Even if they are?
No, because that would be, that, that's on us. If you're, we have to help that student become not chronically disruptive. And that's what we're doing with the transitional support room, and that's what we're doing on a daily basis with our social worker and behavior interventionist. There may be a student who, a month ago, we might have said, oh, that student's having a little bit of difficulty. And whatever your definition of chronic is, that might have been something that you was, oh, that's a chronic. Not anymore, because they're putting the interventions in place. So.
We don't let it become chronic, because if we start seeing repeated behaviors, then we're looking at a social worker and a behavior interventionist or a school psychologist, and do we have to do evaluations? There's so many things that we try to get to the root of what's causing that behavior.
So you have fourth graders. If I've done my math correct, that's nine, 10 years old, yes? I can guarantee you, when I was nine or 10 years old, my parents didn't think it was your fault if I was disruptive. I guarantee you. There's only one instance that the law even allows a school committee to become involved in, in school discipline. And you're shaking your heads like you know what that is, okay? Well, it, generally speaking, it's not going to involve things like, at your level, it's not going to involve things like drugs and guns, et cetera, and felonies. But the assault of a staff member is supposed to ultimately get to us if the parent objects, okay? Have you ever had a staff member assaulted by a student at Minot Forest?
Yes. That's, it showed it on that, that chart, and it's gone down from last year.
To me, going down is, is a minor victory. So do you still have the students there who assaulted teachers?
Yes and no. Some students we don't.
Some, yes, and some, no.
Right. And depending on the supports we have in place, or the disciplinary consequences we've done, that has made a difference.
Don't get me wrong. I really admire your willingness to take responsibility for their behavior, and I admire the fact that you love every student and think every one of them is capable of being redeemed, so to speak, okay?
That's why we're teachers. That's why we're educators. That's our job.
But we also can't. But we also can't do it without the parents, because we absolutely need their support in that.
So let me jump in. I think that some of our students that are, that have some behavior challenges also have other issues going on, whether it be in school or out of school. And I think for that reason, when those things happen, it's our duty as educators to sit down and look at what, what is causing this behavior and how we put things in place. For some students, it may be this isn't the appropriate place at the time for education, and it's that, it's then when we look at a short-term or a long-term out-of-district placement. It takes, and if it's with a special education student, it takes, it could take a while to get to that point. But I would say to you, one of the pieces that I've seen in the last several years is the collaboration, the behavior support that we put in place, because we understand our students are coming to us with some emotional issues that are interfering with their learning. And because of that, it's up to us to either make adjustments or help the student come to a, a different place until they're able to be successful in their home school.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Pete Stedman. I am the principal of the Wareham Middle School. Thank you so much for letting me speak with you today. So looking at the first slide that we have. So similar to other schools, we looked at data from September to March over a four-year period. And we have noticed that there has been a decline in the total number of referrals over the, when you compare this year to four years ago. And this is everything, every, every referral that's written up by a faculty member. And so the question that we've been really looking at this year and last year is why, why that is? Why is the trend going this way? So one thing it's really important to mention before we dig deeper into what we've done at the school is, I guess, to echo what Bethany said, that we have great, great kids, the Wareham Middle School. We've got great kids in this entire district. Sometimes they make poor choices. And it's interesting that we had a, a discussion today about the brain, and particularly in the Wareham Middle School, the age group that we have, the brain is developing. And so we, as educators, have to meet the kids wherever they are, and we have to provide support. So one primary reason why we see a decline, I believe, is because we have an unbelievable teaching staff that does everything in their power to support our students where they are. And we have a wonderful admin team as well. So we, particularly this summer, we took on some very specific agenda items in order to address behaviors that we had saw last year. Some key components to understand. Two years ago, we added a full-time social worker and also a school psychologist two years ago. This year, we also added another, another layer. We have an intern who's a social worker, and we have a person from Gosnold who comes to our school once a week to offer additional supports. We also launched PBIS last year. It is a three-year rollout. But included in that, we have a time set aside each day where we allow students to get some interventions, but is also to target what we call Viking Strong, where the very specific behaviors are taught and reflected upon by our, our student body, and oftentimes with very specific feedback from teachers. The teachers play a huge role in being clear about what their expectations are. And that's not only in the classroom, but it is also in the hallways, in the lunchroom, and our teachers have done a remarkable job at being clear what those expectations are. Some elements that we've also recognized, when we. Some elements that we've also recognized, we, as a middle school, sometimes there can be a tendency maybe to focus only on those times when decisions are being made poorly by some students. It is really essential that we also take the time to recognize when the kids have done the right thing and have made difficult decisions in times of adversity. So it is important to catch students who are doing things well. So for example, we have, actually on Friday afternoon this week, every month, we have something known as the Asgard Council, where teachers identify one student in their classroom that exemplifies certain traits that we have associated with Viking Strong. And each student is given a Viking god, a Viking deity, that exemplifies those specific traits. So we have students who are Thors, we have students who are Odens, we have students who are Valkyries. I think I'm still on safe grounds in terms of the separation of church and state. But it is really important at that time that those kids are recognized and there is something said by an individual teacher on those kids who get those individual awards. If a student is doing something well in the hallway, there are now, we implemented something known as a Fast Pass, which is real currency for students, that they get to jump the lunch line. So that's something that they, believe me, it's been a great thing. And we had Student of the Month. We had our Student of the Month today. And we also have VIP lunch tables for those students who show exemplary behavior in the lunchroom. All of those items are recognized by our teachers. And sort of that individual connection by our teachers to recognize when kids are doing the right thing. As you know, over the past few years, we've also revamped our discipline code so that it mirrors the high school. And working with our school council last year, we added new components. And we had that verified by the school committee last spring. And we have had strict adherence to that discipline code. That, yes, there are sometimes students make poor choices, but if we stick to the discipline code, we implement those policies as written. We also are in the process of really digging deep with data. We share discipline with data, we shared discipline data with faculty. Actually, this past Monday, we shared with them some more recent data that we've uncovered and in order to adjust accordingly. We, as a PBS school, as has been mentioned by my other principal colleagues, we are a Swiss data school. So we implement every single discipline occurrence that happens at the school. And we can identify the time, the location, the student. And so as a faculty, we, the beginning of this year, we noticed that there were times during the school day where instances of discipline were spiking. So we made it even more of an exerted effort to connect and make sure that teachers were in the hallways to be a presence there. We also have, as an admin team, we have weekly meetings with the superintendent to reflect student data in regards to discipline. Two elements I want to share with you that has come up in some of the questions. What do you do with some students who have made poor decisions? And what sort of proactive approaches are you going to make with those individual kids? So we ran two pilot programs this year. The first one was an academic support class. We noticed that there are some students who are participating in our summer school program who are making poor choices academically. And oftentimes, we noticed that if you're making poor choices academically, sometimes that can manifest itself in behaviors. So we have an academic support class. Again, this is a pilot. And we are very encouraged. We've seen some gains. Actually, a lot of gains. All but one student right now are on track to pass all of their classes, and they do not need summer school, as it stands right now, which we're really, really excited about. We also implemented something called morning mentors. We identified, over the summer, the administration identified 20 students who had the most chronic instances of behaviors. So we assigned a staff member to meet that student in the morning. Staff member, of course, agreed. And they checked in with them as they entered the building. Have you had, how's your breakfast today? Are you prepared for class? Are you ready for the day? Is anything bothering you? There's something that we need to refer to, our excellent guidance counselors, our excellent social worker, our great nurse. So what we're pleased to notice is that 75% of those students identified had only one, or actually, no suspensions. Forty-five percent of those identified have no suspensions at all this year. In terms of referrals, I just took some examples. For example, student X went from 24 referrals last year to zero this year. Student Y went from 18 to 3. Student A went from 35 to 8. And we're projecting a decrease in discipline referrals of these particular students by 31%. Like Deccus and Minot, we also noticed that there was a spike around the holidays in November, December. And as I shared with the faculty on Monday, we have noticed that those numbers are actually decreasing as the year goes on. At this time, we are excited in service of the progress. We know we are, it's a constant work in progress. We know that we have students who will make poor decisions, but we're there to support them. And our hope is that we will continue to see gains. I'm open for questions, please.
Thank you. Do I have any questions? Joy?
The other principals had mentioned surveying parents and staff. So have you done any of that?
Yeah, we, in October, we surveyed the staff, and we were pleased with those results. Our hope is that we will continue to do that throughout the year to get different benchmarks. Last year, we only did it at the end of the year, and we felt that was not truly reflective of, or I should say, helpful in terms of trying to meet the faculty needs in real time. So our hope is to do that again soon as well.
Okay. Because I was just wondering if the decrease in discipline led to an increase in happiness with school culture?
Yeah. But that's something we'll have to see, yeah. The early results were positive, but we'll have to see what happens when we give that survey again.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Swett?
So at the risk of sounding like a person who sees the glass, you know, half-empty, the 25%, as you said, 75% had made significant progress of the 20 that you identified. The 25%ers are, would appear to be what, and I know you probably have the same wonderful idealism as your colleagues who have been here earlier this evening, but the 25% appear to be chronically disruptive.
25% of those 20?
Five.
There you go.
Thankfully, five.
Right.
Yes. So how do you feel about those five?
Always optimistic. And I'll tell you why. Mr. Swett, I'll be quite honest with you. You used a word earlier this evening of incorrigible.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, I, there, there were teachers, and particularly a headmaster, when I was in school, who would have classified me as incorrigible in middle school. And so do I have great faith in our kids? Do I have even more faith in our faculty? I do. Because one thing that the data points to is that when we put in interventions, kids can make gains. And not everyone, all at the same time. Because if we implemented those supports for every person in this room, not everyone in the room would make gains exactly at the same time. And particularly when we're talking about 10, 11, 12, 13-year-olds, they make gains at different times. We at the Wareham Middle School will never give up on a kid. And when we feel, one last point. And when we feel, when we feel that a student continues to make poor choices, we will find different avenues, different support systems, different conversations to see how we can help that student.
Just to be clear, that was what is called an applause line, okay? Everybody wants to applaud that kind of idealism, and I admire it. But would you say that those five, to use your number, are having a negative impact on the educational environment of your school?
I think what happens is our students recognize that kids make different choices at different times. So I'm not, I'm not here for making applause lines. I'm saying something that I believe personally in my soul. Like, I believe that the easiest thing for us to do would be like, those kids need to go somewhere else, or those kids need to have a different avenue. And as Dr. Shaver-Hood said, it might lead, based on having conversations, whatever, if it's special ed or if it's having numerous conversations with parents and faculty and specialists in the building, it might lead to that. But we need to exhaust all of those opportunities first.
I will tell you, and I benefit hugely from the fact that I interact with students now, seventh and eighth graders. I will tell you what the students tell me. Students tell me is that their goal, educational goal, is to never be in a class or anywhere near a class with those students. That's what they tell me. That's quite a goal, wouldn't you agree? That they have to have that kind of goal?
Yeah, but I think it's also, as Dr. Shaver-Hood had mentioned as well, you know, one thing that we can't always reveal is those extenuating circumstances that might be impacting that behavior in the classroom. So again, we might feel free to agree to disagree on this.
Drama.
We might, you know, so there may be some extenuating circumstances. But I think if those, sometimes the kids can see only one side of that. And the other thing is our counselors are also fantastic in not just identifying and working with students who are struggling. They're also pretty awesome in working with students who might see some things that they're wondering about and helping them process as well.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
I think I would like to add one thing. I think at the middle school and at all our schools, our students deserve the right and the ability to attend classes in an environment that allows them to learn. And sometimes we may have to help students channel certain energies, certain behaviors, because no students come to school to be bothered, to be, their learning to be interfered with. And when those things happen, whether it be with a small majority of students, it's our job as educators to come up with a solution to channel students' behaviors in such a manner that it does not interfere with the rights of others. Because everyone deserves the ability to come to school to learn.
Mary?
Thank you.
Dr. Stedman, just one more.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. So I just want to say, first of all, I'm a huge advocate of least restrictive environment for all children. And I believe, along with you, we need to exhaust every possible method to help these children. But then there does come a time when we realize that sometimes children need a different alternative setting because to meet their needs better. And at one time in Wareham, we had, and we still have, but my question is, do they accept middle school students, Mr. Palladino?
No, they do not.
Okay. All right. One time we had that. And I'm sorry, we don't still have it. Because many children were successful in that setting. And it was still within our district.
Thank you.
I'll try and be brief because I know what the next agenda item is. My name is Scott Palladino. I'm the principal of the high school. Thank you for being here tonight. This is great. I appreciate, first of all, all my colleagues that came here before me because they really set the table for the students in regards to discipline. And we're very blessed at the high school because, first of all, we have a track record if there are concerns. But certainly, they've done a great job to point those students in the right direction so we can minimize the discipline issues at the high school. So basically, we have two types of discipline issues. Attendance-based, which may be tardies or forgetting to stay for detention. Obviously, the disruptive-based are the ones that people are most concerned with. And I can honestly say, we've gone down every year for the last three years. And we anticipate almost cutting those numbers in half this year. Well, I'll talk about the reason for that. And I'll talk about some of the programs that we have in place, very similar to my colleagues. So we have seen some improvements that I want to celebrate and certainly want to identify. We've got three deans that work with these students. And a lot of the reason for the, most of the reason for the decrease is because of their proactive approach, being on the job, doing the job. I know Christine Sinelli is here today. Shaleen, Denise, and Steve Rumbold are our three deans. And they do an awesome job working with the students. And I have the pleasure this year of working with the seniors because we had to cut a dean last year. But we've seen a 14% improvement in attendance, 15% in disruptive behavior. That was for last year. This year, based on the percentage of the school year, we anticipate 24% improvement in attendance-based issues and a 51% improvement in disruptive-based behaviors. We utilize a Google Doc. It's a free program that gives us information on student occurrences. Like my colleagues mentioned, locations, which is important. So we know how to better supervise if there are concerns. But really, you know, when you look at the size of the school, the percentage of occurrences are very small. And a good percentage of them are in some of our social and emotional classrooms, which require a lot of assistance and a lot of documentation. So it's been a great year from a discipline standpoint at the high school. And we also have, I'll go through some of the supports. So I mentioned the deans. We have a behavioral therapist that works with our at-risk students, does an awesome job of being proactive. And again, this alleviates a lot of those behaviors that you hear about. Two guidance counselors, they provide another layer of intervention. School psychologist that provides counseling as needed. And we have an in-school suspension program under the direction of Maji Rakovsky, who's here today. And she does an awesome job of keeping the students in school whenever possible. It's a great alternative to an out-of-school suspension, which oftentimes is a reward for many of our students. We also have after-school office attentions. These would be for less serious offenses. And as mentioned previously by my colleagues, you know, we have a student success council. Matter of fact, we had a meeting this afternoon on students that we have concerns with, whether it be academically, attendance-based, behavior-based, whatever it may be. And we try and provide supports. We have mentors for struggling students. We're getting that. That's pretty much off the ground, thanks to our site-based management group. And I think we've got a lot of great supports for the high school. So I think we're off to a really good start, and I think the data speaks for itself. Certainly answer any questions you may have.